...twenty twenty-three at six thirty P. M. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. The prayer will be by Reverend Booth and the pledge of allegiance will be by Councilman College. Please stand and silence all electronic devices.
First prayer, oh God, we thank you for today and thank you for your blessings and your restored bonus. We look to you, Lord God, when you said to acknowledge you and you would direct our path. We pray for your guidance, Lord God, that you will show yourself, Lord God, and be in your will and your way. We pray for peace in this land, Lord God. We pray, God, for our visitors that are here this week, for the safety, Lord God, and the safe travel. We give you glory, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman College, and thank you, Reverend Booth. That brings us to our agenda order of approval by our city manager, Ms. Yancey. Do you have any changes?
Yes, Mayor, I need to remove announcement number one. I need to remove business agenda item number five. And I need to add a recorded agreement with Belk to our September ninth eighth minutes, which are all consented.
Do we have any other additions or deletions? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order approval with the changes?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. All in favor? Mr. George? Councilman George? Motion carry. Councilman George is not with us this evening. He's participating on by phone due to he's under the weather. That brings us to our announcements. First, before we announce anything, if anybody, if you have time after we leave here and they're not finished, they're having a holiday extravaganza about Hickory Hills Country Club, and I ask that you support them if there's still time, or if you have family, friends at home and you can message them on your phone, tell them, go support our local businesses. They're having a holiday extravaganza up there, and I encourage everybody to support them. Ms. Yancey, the other announcements?
Yes, we'll be having an outdoor movie night on Friday, October thirteenth, starting at six thirty P. M. at Goche Sports Flex. It features, the featured movie is League of Super Bets. City of Goche's thirty-third annual Goche Mullet and Music Festival will be held Saturday, October twenty-first, from nine A. M. until six P. M. at the former Sealy River Mall Park.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. We do not have a presentation agenda this evening, so that brings us straight to business agenda item number one. So, resolution declaring the necessity for the sale and issuance of a general obligation note of the city in a principal amount not to exceed one million, three hundred and eighty thousand for the purpose of raising money to pay the cost of purchasing certain machinery and equipment for the city, authorizing the publication of a notice of note sale in connection with said note, and the preparation and distribution of information and materials related to the sale and issuance of said note and for related purposes by our city manager, Ms. Yancey.
Yes, Mayor, if you recall, in our new public service provider contract, we will own the equipment. So this is basically issuing a short-term borrowing under a statute, which allows you to borrow up to one percent of your assessed value, total assessed value of the city on a five-year note. And this is to buy additional equipment that will be needed, because if you will recall, we have a minimum staffing of thirty-five, so you have increased people, so you're going to need increased equipment. And that is what this is for. As anticipated, it will be awarded on October seventeenth, so that you will be in a position to purchase equipment around the same time as the new contract starts. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Pittman from Government Consultants and Miss Fairbanks from Butler Snow, both of whom will be assisting with this note, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council? To approve? So get a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussions, starting with Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
Yes, and we basically just purchasing our equipment, um, to, um, um, to move forward towards being, um, without contracting. Am I correct?
We, yes, so at the conclusion of this contract, the equipment that was used by the former provider, we returned over to you, to the city, per your contract with them that's currently in place. But you need additional equipment. So under this new contract, starting in November, you will own the equipment, and the company will ensure it and maintain it and operate it to perform your public service work. So now you will own your equipment from now.
Okay. No further pledge. Councilman Gilat?
With the new contractor coming on board, is he going to supply the city with an expected list of what?
Yes, sir.
Within a short period of time?
Yes, sir.
What expected additional equipment they will need to, uh, maintain our?
They're already working on it.
They're working on it?
Yes, sir.
You got an idea when that will be submitted to us?
I know that they've looked at the equipment. Um, I've been in communication with their current provider to kind of firm up those listings about transferring the equipment, and then they should have something ready by the time we get the bids or proposals back from this note to award to whoever the lowest bidder is on the interest rate. So we should have a better idea after that, but yes, they're going to work to kind of say, give us an idea of what else we need for the additional people.
Now, this thing says one point three million dollars, but I'm seeing here that we only gonna do so much every year for the next five years?
It's a five-year note.
It's a five?
First year, and I'm doing this from memory, so probably took it the first year for like three hundred and seven thousand, and then the next year goes down lower to about three hundred thousand, and then it drops until about two, but in the upper two, yes, but it's a five-year note. Um, we also budgeted five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars with us within your budget this year.
But if the new contractor doesn't need equipment or mounting to this, what we're authorizing here, will we reduce the note down to that amount, or are we just gonna let it, we're gonna borrow it all?
No, you don't borrow that much, and I'll let Steve address that. If we don't need it all, we can.
It's callable at any time. You can pay, you can pay back at any time if you borrowed too much, if you don't need that much equipment.
With no interest?
Pay it back. Okay.
Immediately, five days' notice. So five-day notice.
You can pay, pay some of it back with five days' notice.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Gil, Councilman College?
Uh, I think Councilman Gilat pretty much asked all the questions I was along.
Thank you.
Beat you good.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Jackson, and I just want to also thank, um, our city manager, our city clerk, and for working with Steve Pittman, with Government Consultants, and Sue Fairbanks from Butler Snow. We appreciate you all coming down and everything you do to help save the city of Goche and what's in our best financial interest, and we, um, look forward to continuing to work with you all. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion, uh, Councilman George, motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Approval of the final application certificate of substantial completion and other closeout documents for the College Park-Gilottville Road and Valleywood subdivision projects by Kim Soshe, our grants and project manager.
Yes, this phase of this project was a little over a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to video, smoke test, and manhole test. Uh, now that that's finished, we can move forward with repair, replacement in the problem areas. The total cost of this project is one million, five hundred thousand. Again, this is Kim's secret, uh, grant project.
Thank you, Ms. Soshe. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to approve the final pay application certificate of substantial completion and other closeout documents for the sanitary sewer mains rehabilitation, CCTV, smoke testing, and manhole testing, the College Park-Gilottville Road and Valleywood subdivisions project? So moved. Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
Uh, based on what was determined from this particular portion of the project, how quickly will Seymour be able to turn around and get us the repairs, their recommendation on repairs?
Over the next few months, I have a plan to get them out as much, because I'm gonna put together for replacement pipe.
Along with, uh, OPC?
Yes.
Okay. That's all we need, no, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Councilman Gilat, all in favor?
I mean, Councilman College, all in favor?
Councilman George, motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, consideration of a special exception that would allow a mobile home in a C-three highway commercial zoning district located on Robinson Steel Road, Goche, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-three dash twenty-eight dash SC by our planning director, Mr. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from John and Sarah from Mel for a special exception that would allow a mobile home in a C-three highway commercial zoning district on Robinson Steel Road. The application fee is two hundred and fifty dollars and paid on August twenty, August fourth, twenty twenty-three, and all public notice requirements have been met. So some background on this property is, uh, approximately one acre, there is public water and wastewater services available in the city. The surrounding zoning in this area is C-three highway commercial, and the comprehensive plan's future land use designation is regional scale commercial. I've included the review criteria for your review from section four point sixteen point four of the UDO. Upon hearing this case, the planning commission recommends the city council approve the special exception as presented, based on the fact that all relevant criteria have been met. So the city council made a previous special exception, previous special exception would change if it denied a special exception. Your attachments are included, the GPC excerpt from the meeting dated nine seven twenty-three, along with the back end of that consent, if you have any questions for her.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson? Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion by council to approve the consideration, the special exception that would allow the mobile home in a C-three highway commercial zoning district located on Robinson Steel Road, Goche, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-three dash twenty-eight dash SC, PID number eight one nine seven zero 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 five dot zero zero zero?
Make a motion that we approve, planning commission's recommendation.
Got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, is it, when it, when it, for it been in a CP three, C-three, um, zoning, is this like another one of the areas we have, or just, it's just in a commercial zone area? I'm just asking for understanding.
This is an area on the fifty-seven corridor that was rezone, uh, after the comprehensive plan or during the comprehensive plan, uh, around two thousand and ten. I think it was an area that they suspected would grow to more of a commercial area because it'd be an interstate corridor, however, the area really hasn't gone in that direction. So we've, we've been, we've issued a few of these conditional uses, special exceptions in that area for mobile homes. There are other mobile homes in the area.
Right. No further question. Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
There is, you said there is water and sewer to this property?
Yes.
Is this kind of, I was reading today excerpt, so they've got an easement from the road, because it looks like it's a little bit ways off the road, so, uh, we're not gonna be responsible for maintaining that easement area, is that correct? Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat, all in favor? Councilman George? Ms. Pinnell, y'all can go to planning department tomorrow. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Consider a request by staff to amend the UDO to increase the maximum lot coverage for principal structures and accessory structures in an R-one low-density single-family residential district by planning director, Mr. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I am requesting this amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance pursuant to section four point two oh, that would allow an increase in maximum lot coverage for principal structures and accessory structures in an R-one low-density single-family residential district. So basically, staff see the need to amend UDO to allow a little more lot coverage in this R-one district due to the fact that, number one, we've issued several variances to sizes of accessory structures in this area. Uh, city attorney and I have looked at the sister cities ordinances and what they allow, and we're actually bringing our allowance up to, to about what they allow, actually still a little less, but a lot closer to what they're allowing. So, that being said, we're asking city council to approve this UDO text change for increasing the allowable square meters for accessory structures.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council to approve the planning commission's recommendation?
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Anderson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Col, um, Gilat?
I notice it says in low-density, density, single-family residential districts, which does not include like subdivisions where the houses are, right?
Uh, actually, yes, sir, most of our subdivisions are in the R-one district.
I know they are, but this says low-density, single-family residential district.
Yeah, that's our R-one. That's our R-one district.
I know, so what I'm asking says low-density, is that in areas where there's not many houses? What, for us, I live in Seagull, we can increase the size in there too?
Residential is, but that's just what they titled the R-one district, low-density single-family residential.
Okay, all right. Low-density, what type of one is low?
It's all, it's, it's just the classification and the unified development ordinance for residential, the, anything's on to R-one residential, which your neighborhood is R-one. Most neighborhoods in Goche are R-one. That all, Councilman?
I'm done.
Councilman College?
This does finally eliminate the ambiguity that we have prior to, uh, the lot coverages, correct? I know we, we had some ambiguity as far as whether it was fifty percent of the primary structure versus the lot coverage and all that stuff, so.
We are actually removing the fifty percent of the primary structure. It'll be based on, solely based on, uh, total lot coverage for all structures or a percentage of the rear yard or four accessory structure.
Thank you. Perfect, that's all I have. Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? Councilman George, motion council carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five, which we removed from the agenda. Can I ask why?
It's cleaned up.
Okay.
The car's been moved?
It's slick.
Slick.
It's a little light.
That brings us to business agenda item number six. Authorization to enter into memorandum of understanding with the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security to accept MOHS funding for the Goche Fire Department for equipment purchases in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars by Kim Soshe.
Uh, this is for the fire department. The equipment they intend to purchase will have to purchase, uh, is an airbag rescue kit, rescue jack set, and a glass cutter.
Thank you, Ms. Soshe. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number six? Do we have a motion by council to enter into the MOU with the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security to accept the MOHS funding for the Goche Fire Department for equipment purchases in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Gilat?
Let's go get some more money.
Thank you. Councilman College?
I have no comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
I just want to thank everybody who worked on this, and it's needed, and our firefighters deserve it, and their safety is our utmost importance. And until you've had to go and fight in that heat house with all that equipment on you, um, you don't, and nobody will understand. You just think it's a firefighter, but that gear is a hundred percent hotter than it is a nice being in this room. So thank all of our firefighters when you see them, and we greatly appreciate all you do for our city. We have a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number seven. Authorization enter into memorandum of understanding with the Department of Justice to accept Just Grant Cops Office Technology and Equipment Funding for Goche Police Department for equipment purchases in an amount not to exceed five hundred and ten thousand dollars by Kim Soshe.
This will be used for radios, body cams, car cameras, and modems for police cars. So he's, he's ready to go. Ready to go. Great, then.
Thank you, Kim. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number seven? No. Do we have a motion by council to enter into the MOU with the Department of Justice to accept Just Grant Cops Office Technology and Equipment Funding for the Goche Police Department for equipment purchase in an amount not to exceed five hundred and ten thousand?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
No, sir.
Councilman Gilat?
We haven't received the money yet, if we receive it, I'll spend it.
It's irreversible, right?
Yeah. Okay.
So most we spend, it'll pay us back.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman College?
Is this enough to outfit all the vehicles? And our officers?
Right now, we got some, it was in the fleet that are marked, and I have cameras on, and this will make sure that all the vehicles have cameras, and then officers will be getting brand new by the cameras, replacing. The current ones we have are basically aged out, obsolete, can't get parts to fix them.
Okay, sir. So we should be about a hundred percent on our vehicles with the cameras, and then our officers get new cameras, and we'll be a hundred, hundred percent covered as far as cameras concerned. Perfect, thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin? Uh, once again, just want to thank everybody who worked on this and helped get the funding, and, um, as you just heard, the chief already has the money spent, just waiting, um, for the okay to spend it. So, uh, we, um, thank our police officers for all they do, and we need, um, them and their safety, um, to look at, after them also, and we thank them for all they do in our community. So we got a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Jackson, all in favor? Councilman George, motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number eight, approve it, approval of docket of claims, um, by our city clerk. We've all been provided the docket attached to our agenda, um, it's on the website, um, and that is the docket presentation. So do we have any public comments on the docket on business agenda item number eight? Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion, we approve the docket of claims, provide that all entries there on are true, correctly entered and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by, a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Gilat, all in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda, approval of, um, if any consent agenda, we approve in one motion unless somebody wants to pull one. One, approval of the minutes from the budget meeting held September the twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and the recess council meeting held September the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, with adding the stamped file copy recording of the redevelopment agreement with the city of Goche and Belk. Two, receive August twenty twenty-three finance reports. Three, authorization of city petty cash funds. Four, approval of municipal compliance questionnaire for FY twenty twenty-two to FY twenty twenty-three. Five, approval of the updated inventory spreadsheet of the city of Goche's assets. Six, authorization for the chief LPA official to request project activation from Mississippi Department of Transportation for the city, for the Goche-Bankley-Vallywood to US ninety multi-use sidewalk project. Seven, authorization to submit a grant application to the Mississippi Department of Transportation for a citywide transportation alter, alter, alternative plan. Six, approval of the water and sewer adjustments for October twenty twenty-three in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred, ninety-six dollars and seven cents. Do we have a motion to approve one through eight?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any, um, all in favor? Councilman George, motion carries. That brings us to our, thank you, Captain. That brings us to our citizen comments. Um, you have three minutes to come, come to this front podium, state your first, last name and address, and you got three minutes to speak.
If anybody hasn't signed up?
Oh, um, has any, if anybody didn't sign up and you want to sign up, raise your hand now. Billy Booth.
Just one lady in the back, back there.
She's. Y'all watch that stretch, you know?
Just stretching, right?
It's a bitch.
Billy Booth, ward, former resident, um, good evening. In the eighteen chapter of Book of St. Luke, but Jesus spoke of a parable of a widow woman that repeatedly went to the judge and asked of him to avenge her of her adversary. I am here again to ask Councilman Anderson to approve to us that he, his Facebook page was hacked, hard to resign. I know there are some that are wondering why we are coming here at every council meeting asking the same thing. There have been some to say that we need to move on and not bring it up again, but I'm back here again for another reasons. First of all, the ratio of Facebook posts that were found on Councilman Anderson's Facebook page personally offensive to me. Councilman Anderson is my councilman, and over the years, we've shown respect to each other, um, but seeing this post has been very disheartening. However, as I have stated from the beginning of this issue, the way Councilman Anderson has handled this issue has been the problem. We're still wanting for this issue to be addressed because it has not been addressed. We're still wanting for this issue to be addressed because it has not been addressed. I'm calling on Councilman Anderson to address this truthfully and if he did it, to own up to it and do the right thing because it is obvious to anyone that has common sense, he is hiding, delaying, and has lied at least once in this process. When the ratio Facebook uh post was discovered, he kept quiet for about a week. Then when asked about it, he said he was out of town and would have handled it when he got back. He stated that his Facebook page was hacked and he had his attorney to come here and to show a poster board of him being hacked by using an IP address location. After pointing out to Councilman Anderson that IP address do not determine being hacked, Councilman Anderson started in June saying that it, it wasn't his page. It cannot be both. Either he was hacked as he and his attorney had said, or it was not his page. So therein lies the known lie that we know. Uh, Councilman Anderson is now saying that it wasn't his page, but at the same time, he wants us to accept the poster board as evidence of being hacked. Then in July, July the eighteenth council meeting, Councilman Anderson said that he was going to show his Facebook files to the NWA CP Vice President. Over two months later, he still has not done that. September the fifth, Councilman Anderson said that he was going to call me personally to address my concerns. Today he tells me that he did not have my telephone number, but he knows where I work, he knows where I live, he could got in touch with me. I have not gotten a call yet. So it's obviously that Councilman Anderson is delaying, hiding, and is not being fully truthful with us. I'm pleading again that he would do the right thing, do the right thing for himself and for his family, do the right thing for his reputation, do the right thing for his constituencies, and ultimately do the right thing by God, because God said, a lie will not carry in his sight.
Steve Gavin?
Mayor of Council. I'm Steve Gavin, live at twenty-two oh eight Cali Road. And uh, I'm here with a water bill, or actually two water bills. Last month I went ahead and paid the four hundred and eight dollars. Before that, up until from January to September, I was the highest water bill I've had was a hundred and eighty-three dollars with that back last December when I pipe busted and uh it run while I was out of town, I did fix it just quick as I got home. It was in my boat house. Other than that, my, my uh next, next bill was, you know, the rest of the time was a hundred and forty-eighty-six dollars and thirteen cents, a hundred and third dozen, seventy-three cents, a hundred and twenty-one eighty, a hundred and thirty-three seventeen, a hundred and three seventy-seven, oh four eighty-three. And all of a sudden, last month, I got billed for four hundred and, where's it? I got billed four hundred and uh, that's just, that's the past month, I got one for four hundred and forty-three dollars and the month before that, I wrote a check for four hundred uh, two dollars, I believe it was. And something's going on. I talked to the lady right back here a while ago and she's short by the day. If I uh use, and she said, if there's something, need something used at two, at eleven o'clock at night, I was asleep at eleven o'clock at night. I go to bed every night before ten o'clock, I don't even see the ten o'clock news. And I guarantee, and then two of us in the house, me and my wife, it's the only one that I've had, uh, Councilman Anderson over there, he, he come over there, we, we run a bucket of water, five, five gallons, it turned out five gallons. They said my toilet was, was, was leaking. I got, put the blue dye in the toilet to make sure that nothing could leak. I've hired a professional plumber, Mr. Joey McQueen, to come over there and say, and, and see, see this, bring his meter, try to, try to find, ever try to find any leak. We go out there, I got videos of the, of the uh meter, I got videos this morning, I got videos this afternoon, it's saying it's, it's, it's not moving. Nobody in the house committed all day today and that water is not, that meter is not moving, the little dial, I think I got some water in, in the bottom this morning and I think the dial has moved, moved seven, seven tenths of a gallon all day today. But uh, now I might did flush the toilet after I left, so I mean, it may run, run a little bit after that. But uh, we take a shower, there's, there's two of us, we take a shower, we go to the bathroom and we use very little to cook with. The last two months, I mean, I got a little five by, five foot by ten foot border, border garden, garden over there that I watered. I didn't, I ain't had a garden since June, my garden's been gone. I have, I have not watered my grass, my grass is, is brown, brown as can be. I have not watered it, I've not watered the uh, the garden and she's watering flowers a little bit in the afternoon or something like that, you know, every other day. But uh, something wrong. I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what it is. They said I used twenty-four thousand one hundred and sixty gallons last month.
Mr. Gavin, your three minutes is up, but we will get with, have we spoken with them?
I will, I will give them a call again tomorrow.
And we'll get with, get, we'll ask that in the street and see and get with?
Can I say one second?
Yes, sir.
She showed me where, where I was using two hundred fifty, or two hundred fifty, two hundred sixty gallons uh, a day.
In an hour? That was in an hour?
Is it hour or?
And it was an hour.
An hour?
Yes.
At night?
I'm not even home. I mean, I'm not even abusing water, I'm in the bed. Something's going on, I don't know where's the radio signal, I don't know what it is, but it's something, something is happening. I've got the bills for the past year right there.
Okay, we'll get, ask that our city manager get with Mr. Morgan and we'll look into it for you and get back with you.
Because even if the radio reads off, I mean, you still got the meter tick on there. So I mean, they should be able to manually read your meter to see.
Well, why the meter start registering at ten, eleven o'clock at night and, and register two hundred and something gallons in an hour and, and he's sleeping at that time?
Is that coming from the radio reader or is that coming from the actual?
Coming from the radio read, that we hook up to the computer and it will sit there and it'll give me a daily total, but then it'll go on and break it down to hourly. So that his consumption is usually coming, starting at about ten o'clock at night.
Is somebody stealing his water, man?
Well, that's what some of the, that's a neighbor on this side, but I got no water on, completely on that side of the house.
That's what's happening the whole time. Those people, hasn't it? It's not the first time.
It's not the first time, it's not.
This is happening to lots of people.
Ms. Gavin, working, I mean, Mr. Gavin, we're gonna get the city manager to get with Ms. Morgan and we'll look into it and see what we can do to look into the issue and try to help resolve the issue or give you some answers.
All right, thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for coming. That brings us to Michael Middleton.
Hi, y'all doing?
All right.
I live at forty-seven thirty-two on Ike Moss Park. But I'm president, I am the president of the East Gulf Coast Chapter of the Eighth Philip Randolph. And what we do, we be uh voting education, ask people to get out and vote and hopefully that all of y'all go and vote. My, my problem is, we have about twenty membership that lives in Gochay, Mr. Anderson. And that was a hurtful statement, I'm not saying you did it or didn't do it. If you did, you should resign. It's the human race, it's time for us to look at this man, if he, his character, judge you, anybody by their character, not by their color. If something happened at the school in Gochay, would you tell these fine officers to wait until it's all over and then go in there and clean it up, the mess up? No, sir. It's time for America to grow and we gotta respect each other and love each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Number next, Ms. Moore.
Del Amor, Nancy Twitty, West Gate Parkway. Last time I was here, I was telling him it's a crime for someone to hack your Facebook page. And I was telling you, if you was hacked, just fraud and go get a police report, you did not address that. You talk about everything else, but except for that. If you were hacked, I don't know why you would have a police report. The right thing to do is just go ahead and resign because you're not proving it. You've not proven it, you've just been defiant and you know you probably guilty. You, you haven't proven it, so address why you haven't filed police reports.
Mr. Moore?
My name is Charles Moore, I live in eighteen-twenty West Gate Parkway. I brought my granddaughter here tonight to tell y'all that Ruston, what Ruston had said should never have been said to these young people about being, calling them an word, never. It should never have, you look, what if somebody called your daughter something out of their name? Alleged. Should never have, alleged, but you should prove it. If you prove it, we'll leave you alone. Don't tell them that you did not give that. And you look at my granddaughter over there and tell her that you didn't do it.
I haven't actually said anything like that.
Need to resign.
That brings us to council comments. First is Councilman George, because it's the first meeting of the month.
I have no comment.
Thank you, Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, um, we, we had an event at Baycott Park this past Saturday. Um, I actually didn't want to leave when I was there, but I had to work, of course I work on, on the weekends. Uh, we had a basketball tournament, um, some of the churches came out, some of the uh, just everyday people came out, um, and it was a lot of um, people from different cities came out. Um, it was um, a great turnout, big turnout, big turnout, and uh, they plan on doing this annually. So knowing that the competitive spirit that people have in basketball, I'm looking at forward to this event getting larger. Uh, next year I see it, I see it being a, a huge event. Uh, this was just uh, them, you know, putting it together and saying, hey, we're gonna do it. They, I think they did it within the thirty, forty days or something like that. Now they're doing it annually. I'm sure next year it will be huge. So um, um, big kudos to all the people that participated. They at the last minute got a lot of people to participate, that's, that's how it happens sometimes. They only had three teams, teams in the beginning, before they, before they can get it going, they had thirteen teams going and I mean, it was an all-day event. But it was good to see the spirit of the players, the, the spirit of the people, the community coming together, um, and participating in these types of, uh, type of events. Um, and I look forward to seeing more of that going on. And I think that's, that's all I have. And, and I, I'm, I, I got the tail end of Cruising, of what it was a great event, I, I, but I only got the tail end and I apologize, but I got the opportunity to see the, the, see the um, some of the event. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Delott?
No comment.
Councilman College?
I'm sure the mayor's gonna say the same thing, but uh, the event for Cruising Through the Decades was phenomenal. Kudos to our city manager, our city staff, everybody that was involved with it, you put on a fantastic event, it gets bigger and better every year and I could be proud of our city for being a part of it.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, calling back on what Councilman College just said, Cruising Through the Decades event here, it was really nice Sunday, had uh, good music, a, a big crowd, it was very nice and city staff worked very hard for that and we appreciate it. Mr. Gavin, you and your water bill, um, we gotta get to the bottom of these meters that do this thing, rip the cords, two hundred and something gallons during somebody's sleeping at night. I mean, you don't have any homeless people living next door to you that I know of, running woods or anything that we know of. This is not the first time, many, many times this happened to people, some of them bigger bills than what you got. We gotta get to the bottom of these water meters, these people having to come up here and fight this issue over and over and over. And we're gonna see what we can do looking into it. Concerning my uh, alleged Facebook post, that I chose somebody and they went out and um, got an unbiased attorney that I've never known, never met him in my life until the night he come in here and he was asked to look through my Facebook files that I had sent to me. He caught me in a situation where I was traveling to Austin to meet my family. And I had to get my Facebook files sent to me and they sent them to me while I was in Austin, Texas. And I had them sent to Pasco, Mississippi, to an attorney that I don't even know, to go through a month and a half of my Facebook files and look for that alleged post. Well, one thing, the alleged post would have showed up on my Facebook files regardless of whose page I posted on. It didn't matter whose page out of my seven hundred and something friends or people that I don't even know, if I had posted on it, my Facebook files would show that. But the Facebook post was not on my page, Mr. Booth, you need to get it in your head, that it was not on my page, it was on another person's page. And it was a screenshot somebody made and who knows where it come from, but it, it, even if I made that post, it would show up in my file regardless of whose page it went to. You understand? It would be in my file. And this unbiased attorney that I've never met in my life looked at it, was an IT person, and it was not there. And, and if you don't believe it, I'm sorry, and most people? Most people hacked, cloned, I don't know what it was. Did I say that?
Yes, you said it.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah. WLS.
Well.
You told me you got, you got tits right here.
That's what the file showed you. I'm talking right now, okay?
Well, you just got one?
I, 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 I discussed with you and Mr. Louis Jackson back about six weeks ago, yes, that I was gonna contact y'all and talk to y'all about outside the city environment and, and I was gonna let y'all, Mr. Jackson, look at the files. But the next meeting, before I could get anything done on that, you come up here and anybody go back and look, about six meetings ago, you come up here and you said it was gonna get rough for me and my family, you were gonna make it difficult for me and my family. Yes, sir. Yes, you did, you was gonna make it bad on me and my family. Now, I took that as a threat. I took that as a serious threat. Now, my family lives in, my immediate family lives in Austin, Texas, I don't know what you's gonna do to make it bad on my family in Austin, Texas, but I took it seriously that you were, you were some kind of a threat you made towards me. But right then I decided, I'm cutting off all conversation with you and, and I decided with Mr. Jackson also.
Make sure you make it clear which Jackson you're talking about now.
Richard Louis Jackson.
Okay.
No kidding, do you, right?
No, no.
Not, not Councilman Jackson. Um, but when you threatened me that night, a week, a week or so after I said I was gonna communicate with y'all, that's it. If you wanna threaten me, you threaten me outside of this city hall, not inside this city hall. It has nothing to do with the city, this Facebook post has nothing to do with this city, period. It don't have nothing to do with my wife and they harassed my wife on y'all silly uh, things that they, one of your friends put out there. Live Facebook things he put out there. Threatening my wife, my wife ain't got nothing to do with this, the city didn't have nothing to do with this. I'm talking.
Y'all let him and let's just move on to the next. I know, but.
Freeman, he got teenage.
No, we are the elected and he gets to speak and we will speak at the next or we can email him after the meeting, but it's his turn to speak here in the meeting. And Councilman Anderson, do not ask for a response from nobody. You say your thing, but you're antagonizing.
I haven't been antagonized for the last eight weeks. Okay, let me finish.
Just say what you gotta say and let's move on.
I'm not gonna discuss this in the city hall, in a city meeting ever again. Tonight is it. If you wanna talk with me, we'll talk outside of city hall. Mr. Booth, Mr. Louis Jackson, we'll talk outside of city hall. You got my phone number, I got your phone number, we'll talk and discuss this, but I'm not gonna do it in a city environment anymore, I've done been told this is not a city issue. You understand?
I told you, Councilman Anderson, don't ask no questions. Yeah, you did, you just asked a question. Stop.
I understand.
State what you stating and let's move on.
Let's move on.
Go ahead. Ms. Moore, let's not interact with them. Councilman Alvin?
I'd like to thank the employees, all of the details and the departments that uh work every day to make this city move forward. The contractor, contracted employee, I want to thank you for the work that you all do as well. Of course, you know, without our employees, which are the backbone of this city, we could not operate. I want to thank each department in the city for what you did. That's all I have.
All I can say is right now we need a lot of Jesus. I, I'm gonna stop right now and I feel we need to ask Councilman- I'm gonna stop right now, and I feel we need to ask Councilman, I mean, our planning director, Scott Ankerson, to pray for us in this city one more time before we leave here. So before I continue speaking, Councilman Ankerson, can you pray, I mean, Planning Director Ankerson, can you pray for us? Because we need it. Please stand, because this is.
Father God, we bow our heads before you tonight. We give you thanks and honor and glory. We thank you, God, as your word says, that you will never leave us nor forsake us, God. We know that, Lord, there's a distance between us and you, Lord, that we put the distance there, God, because you do not move, Father. Lord, we just thank you so much for your son, Jesus. We ask for your guidance, God, we ask for unity. We ask that, Lord, that you just spread your love, Father, through throughout this city, God, that you would quicken our hearts, God, forgive, God, as you have forgiven us, Lord. For none of us deserve anything but hell, except for through your son, Jesus Christ's sacrifice on Coward's Cross for our sins, Lord. He was the blameless lamb that took on all the sins of this world, Father, for us, through you, and we thank you for that. And we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I just think with everything, we have a lot of positive going on in this city. Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. We have a lot of positive, and you know, for, as leaders, we have to do what is right and what we feel is best. And we should listen to our constituents, and that's what we're here to do, and that's why we have this for us to speak to. As we stated before, it was allegations regarding that. And Councilman Anderson, I'm just here to tell you, I've been praying, but me and you met before we came in this room, two nights after that meeting. And I stated, and we had a chat back there, and I will meet with you and our city attorney and city manager again regarding that. But the person who has the Facebook page where this post was made clearly got notification how it was deleted, and I'm leaving it at that. So people, all of us citizens, we're not the judge. The man upstairs know what was done, and he will come back, is all I can say. And I'm dropping that subject, and I'm moving on. Back to the positive. Cruising the Coast event, I cannot boast enough about our event. Our city staff, it takes a village to, all of our departments, to come together to make that event successful. To see our youth out there, to see our citizens, to see our visitors coming all across the country to come here for our event was meaningful. The people who returned to our, to Shepherd State Park that we manage, from other areas of our state, but all other areas and other states, it's just meaningful. And I can't thank our city staff enough. The Cruising the Coast Board members, we thank them, we thank all of our sponsors. Um, it would not have been successful without all of you. The Gator Swamp Classic, our G H S band, they did a phenomenal job. It's Saturday, if you were up and out and about, they had tons of bands, tons of visitors throughout the state here, and it was just a great day up there, us hosting bands across the state of Mississippi, and they did a fine job. And I want to thank the staff that might have assisted, but also the Jackson County Board of Supervisors and the Jackson County Road Department for coming through and helping when they're having an event the same time we are, so we don't have enough barricades, et cetera, and we have to partner with them, and they stepped up, and I thank them. The basketball for a day, kudos to Philip LaChanda Dumas, Philip Thomas, Reverend Blanks and his congregation at New Air Baptist Church, Danny Taylor with Air Masters, um, Clockout Restaurant on Market Street in Pascagoula, and the gym they own there in Pascagoula. Um, I thank all of them for supporting our youth and our community. Um, it was a great day out there, it was cool and breezy, and also I thank Norwood Snowballs and those young twins out there working hard, and the other his nieces and nephews out there working to serve the citizens, snowballs, nachos, et cetera, um, that day. It was a nice day in Baker Park, and our youth are starving for more things to do, so we just gotta be supportive of them. As far as our final thing with our belt, as you know, today, our city attorney filed the final document and the redevelopment agreement with us and Belt that will now close out the litigation pending the federal judge, which was probably waiting on this before he signs his order of dismissal. So when that is signed, it will completely be over, but pretty much it is over now with this final redevelopment agreement. It was filed this afternoon in Jackson County Transit Court Land Records by our city attorney. I was there, and we now have it signed, sealed, and delivered. So thank you to our city manager for her hard work, our city attorney, Mr. Heidelshell, the law firm for Belt and Belt Corporate, and I think we can move forward and continue to develop that mall and move Goche forward together. So let's grow Goche together. Lastly, yesterday was Custodian Day, if you did not know. And I'm curious, how many, if I say a number, just raise your hand, how many custodians you think Goche has? If you think we have one, raise your hand. If you think we have two, raise your hand. Three, four, five, six.
Ten, twelve.
Seven. I'm stopping at seven, because we have one on payroll. In this whole city, we have one custodian. But all of the, her helpers that assist her to make her job easy is all of our city employees. So Valerie Stanton is not here, but if you see her, you thank her. She's been dedicated to this city for many years, and she deserves to be recognized. So as her mayor, I recognize her. I'm appreciative. I've watched her city vehicle before, she has photos to prove it, and she was very gracious. So Valerie, if you're watching, thank you for all you do for us. That brings us to our city manager comments. Ms. Jancy. Uh, one, I do have something else. I do need to ask the board to approve. Um, it's a great thing when you have businesses that come together to partner, to host events in your city, because the city staff is limited. So we need volunteers and businesses coming together like they did tonight up in Hickory Hills for the Christmas extravaganza. But the restaurant owner of Cornerstone Restaurant, Tommy Jackson, and also Chris Magus of um, Audio Wave here in Goche, along with the partnership of the Dotsons from Crown Dodge Fiat Chrysler and Pascagoula. Um, they have been having a Jeep night, Jeep in, the third Wednesday of every month at Cornerstone with a live band. So they partnered together to do that, so this month is Halloween, so they felt they wanted to do a Jeep-a-ween, um, which is a unique drive-through Jeep-a-trip. So they're encouraging all of them that come. You're gonna be able to, they'll set up and decorate their Jeeps, and you would just drive through with your children and get a treat. So they're gonna have that on Wednesday, October the eighteenth. But we need permission for them to host their event, for them to close Fuller Drive um, on that evening from five to nine thirty P M. That road is very, not used very much during that time, the other businesses will be closed. Um, so we ask, and also they might need for traffic about two to three barricades. Um, and the police chief has advised, um, he thought this, and the city manager advised, this event would be doable and not require any city staff. So can, we have a motion to approve the special event permitted by Cornerstone Restaurant for a Jeep-a-ween, a unique drive-through Jeep-a-trip.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor? No, Councilman George? I think you said, um, Councilman George, motion carries. Okay, that's all I have. Now on to, Ms. Montgomery is not here this evening, so do, Mr. Danos, do you have anything? Do we have a motion to recess until October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty P M?
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gillett. All in favor? Motion carries, have a great week and God bless. Thank you, Councilman.